The magic hour has struck. I'll officially call the meeting to order, May 9th, 2018. This is a work session of the town board. I will let the minutes reflect that all of our members are present minus Councilwoman Metzler, who may be joining us a little bit later, but at the present time is not here. Staff is with us. We have a number of distinguished members of the audience that we will, at one point or another, hear from some of them, maybe not necessarily all of them, but some of them as we move forward. Before us, we have the April 25th, 2018 minutes and would ask for a motion of approval of those minutes.
I'll second it.
We moved and seconded. Any discussion? See no discussion. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? All right. Our monthly reports are starting to come in and so we're in pretty good shape with those. Public hearings, there are none this evening. We do have some guests this evening, so I would invite the Daniele's to the table. Our first item is a general discussion on the conversion of Basil's Restaurant to Mario's at 1384 Empire Boulevard. Mr. Costello, if you would further tee that up.
I think you've done a great job personally. But in actuality, the reason they're here is because you and I had actually spoken a while back, recognizing the press release to come out. We thought it'd be a good idea just to let the board and the town know what their intent was and give them a chance to come in and talk to them a little bit about what they'd like to do.
Now, just for clarification, this is to open a restaurant at the Clark House?
Yeah.
Don't get started.
Our understanding was this was a free two-minute commercial.
So why don't you just give us an overview?
Yeah, actually, it started a little while back and I don't know if I should be completely frank, I guess, I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but a while back, I was out enjoying an evening with my family and I turned and I heard some ruckus and to my side lobbing ice cream and I see Mr. Costello in the town of Pittsburgh getting ice cream. And I said, surely the town of Penfield has adequate capacity for ice cream, but it seemed it didn't. And then, you know, we had done the Marina, the docks and threatened of lawsuits back then, and we tried doing the Whole Foods grocery store, threatened of lawsuits, so we figured, you know what, let's go with ice cream because who could find fault with frozen custard? And fast forward, that's where we are today. Last year was one of our slowest years at Basil with the water levels being really high in the bay. The five mile an hour speed limit hurt a lot of the boating community and what we saw a magnification of our slowing sales at Basil over the years. We've been there almost 12, 13 years and the concept has been around for almost 18, 19 years when we started in Brighton and we thought it was time for a refresh. And with the ice cream parlor that we decided to add, we thought that would bring a little bit more, rather than just for the summertime waiting for the boaters to come in and with the high water and whatnot that can fluctuate, this gives another reason for guests to come and enjoy the restaurant and have ice cream afterwards. We're going to be updating the, we call it the Swanview Trail, the trail that we put in years ago. We're going to give that a fresh layer of some new stone dust. We're going to add some little walk-off paths, not new paths, but more benches.
Benches.
To seat. And we're actually going to be adding a little bit of an area for one of the airplane docks that's on the water. There's two of them. We don't have any more airplanes, so we're going to turn one of them into kind of a lookout area. We're going to put a fence around it, some tables and chairs out there so people can actually enjoy the water a little bit more. Hopefully they'll bother eating their ice cream. Here's a prototype of the ice cream cups with the logo.
Well, where's this ice cream going to be sold right in the building?
So if you look at that one picture where it shows the ice cream parlor, right now we call that room the sunroom, where we seat up to about 15 or 16 people. That room is going to be converted into the Mario's Ice Cream Parlor and there'll be two windows so that you can walk up to from the outside.
Another entrance.
It doesn't show the two windows necessarily, but the two windows on the left are going to be the walk-up windows so you can get ice cream from outside. You could also go inside through that door or the main door and walk into the ice cream parlor where you can see the different flavors and the cases and enjoy dessert from outside or after dinner. And the concept with the Mario's, we're going to go fresh pasta concept.
Is this Italian? Is it gelato? I mean, what are you, Mario's?
We'll have Italian lemon ice, of course. With gelato, we've, with some research we had, including our Mr. Costello market study we did a couple of weeks ago. Gelato hasn't really picked up in Rochester. When you go to Rome, when you go to Italy, everybody wants gelato and everybody loves it and you leave it 16 times a day. But it seems in Rochester that frozen custard and the hard ice cream is really the thing to do, so that's what we're sticking with.
Yeah, and our feeling is that, you know, we've invested in the Marina and it's doing tremendously well. The apartments are full and people are enjoying that. And the Swan Trail amenity and, you know, everything that we've done through, you know, the town and the DEC to try to encourage people to access and enjoy the water, this is just another avenue to create more of a destination for that part of the bay and maximize, you know, the asset that we all have down there. You know, on the Mario's thing, I mean, obviously, that's our family, my dad. Our intent frankly was to reopen Mario's in the Whole Foods Plaza, but, you know, you can only hold your breath so long and turn purple so long, so my dad was like, we gotta do something. We really didn't want to open another restaurant somewhere else. And so to Supervisor Mailey's dismay, we are going to be moving Mario's to the great town of Penfield and we're happy to do so.
Very good. Very good. Only the external changes will be cutting in a new door, the windows for the ice cream and then essentially the, you know, the...
The door already exists.
Okay, so that's already there.
Right, so the only thing changing are the exterior pickup windows, the sign package, which we've talked to Mr. Costello about. You know, no significant interior changes other cosmetic stuff. Nothing changes in the back with patio or whatever else. Parking lot won't change. You know, some landscaping updating, some refreshing of the landscape that's, you know, kind of getting tired out there.
Can you sit in this ice cream parlor?
So in the front, if you remember, in the front, there was a patio area that rarely got used. So now we have a gazebo out there with tables and chairs, so there'll be an area so that you can enjoy your ice cream there or, you know, walk around. And there'll be a little area inside the restaurant as well that'll be dedicated for seating for the ice cream shop.
Excellent.
Sounds nice.
And then you're going to close for a short period of time, do some internal...
About a week.
Remodeling and updates and some things?
Yeah.
And then close as Basil's and open as Mario's?
Because we're only open in the evening at Basil, we've been able to do some of those modifications already.
Got it.
So really, the anticipation is to close for less than a week, just to do some hardcore stuff that really you can't do when you're open, but it should be open right around Memorial Day, by June 1st is what we're saying.
Correct.
And the last service at Basil is May 20th on that Sunday.
Okay.
And you did note in your press release that you'll be honoring Basil's cards and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Is there any more signage beyond this? I mean, do you have signage by the road that says anything about ice cream? It's just going to be these two signs?
We're probably going to have some road, you know, the enter-exit, which is approved. And I believe at one point, we had a pylon sign approved. We don't have any plans to install that right now. Before we would do that, we'd come back, but right now, there's no plan to put any kind of, to change our signs out by the road.
For the opening, we may have, you know, like you see, like the Perry's Ice Cream Cone by the road so people know you can get ice cream. We'll probably have one of those sign-esque kind of...
Okay. We're good. Other questions, Board?
No, I think this is great. Yeah, I think it's exciting. Certainly, thank you both for sticking it out in Penfield. It's great and certainly plan on supporting this.
We'll be done.
You can see the menu online at mariospasta.com if you have any other...
Maybe you just changed your Basil's page right to Mario's page.
Right, that's what we'll be doing.
It sounds like you're doing a lot of cosmetic things, not so much structural or...
Correct.
But if you are doing anything, it requires remodeling from it and stop it and maybe the building inspectors want to know what your intent is and if you even need one or not.
Yeah, we'll email the fire...
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal. And he's usually pretty good, just have him stop by before we open in case.
Give it a once-over.
I don't anticipate him needing anything, but I'd rather hear from it first than after.
Exactly. And then if you could have your sign people just send us the dimensions for the signs and then we'll start the process for you to get those ready.
Okay.
All right. Board, other questions or comments?
No.
Any additional input for us that you think is appropriate for the record?
Unless you have any special favors or flavors.
Flavors.
We can put a recommendation in, that's about it.
Forty-nine flavors available, so that's what we'll advertise.
There you go.
All right. Mr. Costello, Mr. Valentine, anything from a staff standpoint that we should add to the record that's not already on the record?
I know we're there, I'm sorry.
All right. All right, so we're comfortable, I would entertain a motion of support for this project.
I'll move. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for this to move forward. See no further discussion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks.
All right. We will move on to action items and the first item we have is request for approval of sign package for K2 Brewing at 21, 1221 Empire Boulevard. Mr. Costello?
We did receive an email from Brad Kennedy. They are in the process of finally getting to the point where they want to establish the final signage for the site. Everything there has been kind of temporary until they came to a final decision. I did send this off to you, I believe, last week. The signage that they're proposing is well within the size limitations for the site. Their freestanding sign is actually 16 square feet, I believe, versus the 20 that's permitted by code. And the wall log sign, believe it or not, they're actually entitled 252 square feet of permitted signage based on the length of the building, which is 126 feet. Their signage is four by 16, which is considerably less than that, so they're well within the permitted size requirements for the site. It's really more of a matter of aesthetics if you're comfortable with the size and the sign design. That's really the issue. There is a second sign out here and I think that that's painted into the wall, so the question's going to be, are you comfortable with them having that sign as well as the one on the building? That does constitute a second sign, so up to you.
So from a square footage, if I add the square...
Still well within it.
So that's well within. And is that, is that something that they could put under the current sign on the building and incorporate it into, you know, so when you do the square footage, we always square off?
Tied together.
And so that it's tied together?
I can ask that question.
Shift the sign and...
I mean, it could be a situation where they even eliminate it. I don't know at this point in time. If you're comfortable with the other two signs, I will find out for you what their intent is. One of the conditions might be that they either relocate it, incorporate it into the other sign or eliminate it altogether.
Because then it could be incorporated as part of this, the sign on the building and the square footage of the, you know, the square footage of K2 Brewing and then the, their little K2 insignia, if that were right, right under that, you could square that off and call that, you know, one building sign.
It's still a little redundant. It's the logo that's actually in the new sign.
Yeah, they don't really need it.
I don't know if that's...
The freestanding and the colors there, too, they stand out and that's important because, you know, driving down the hill and you see it, you know, you also make a quick left in there or a quick right in there, you know, it's good, good visibility.
What is, what is the square footage? Remind me again, square footage of the freestanding sign out front?
It's two by eight. And then the other one is four by 16.
I find that...
All right.
I would move that we support their request for the new sign.
I'll second that.
Yep.
So we move by Linda, seconded by Rob. Further discussion? Staff, any additional items that, in addition to what you forwarded out to the board a week ago or so regarding the information, regarding the signs, anything else you should add, you want to see added to the record?
No, other than the fact that they would have to re-eliminate the other signs, I think we should have...
Okay, and then we'll add that.
Well, we're going to inquire first.
Well, when I talk about the other signs, there are currently signs up there.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, we're going to get those out, but then, yes, we will inquire about that and I'll get back to you about the wall logo on the building.
Okay, good. All right, so it's moved, seconded, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to next item, which is the Citizens Climate Lobby. And this is the letter of support that I know the board has seen here over the last month or more that we've talked about this. And I know Rob came back and made a couple of updates and offered a couple of amendments to that. We've incorporated some of those and I think Anna sent the most recent one out to you today. Discussion, we...
I don't know if I saw the most recent one.
So this is, so this is the, yep, this is the most, this is the most recent one here. This is...
I don't know if I saw, I saw his changes. I saw the final one that she sent and then Rob changed, made changes on the final one.
I offered some suggestions and I haven't seen anything since.
Okay.
If there is another one, I have not seen that.
Okay, so this, this is the most recent one based on your, on your, some of your comments that came in from the Saturday, so...
Okay, so these ones are not, I'm sorry, I'm just...
So, so these, these two were incorporated here, you know, so for the record, you know, we talked about, about as, as proposed, I think there, what we had, what we had talked about. I need to just compare them side to side. You had talked about for that fee, fee component, as proposed and, and that would be levied uniformly across, so that, that was put in as proposed. And then you had this often clumsy and that was modified to just indicate that often ineffectively. Okay?
Yeah, to me, it looked like you had some more edginess in there and just a little better words, you're good at that.
Okay.
We're smithing.
So additional, additional wordsmithing based on...
No, I thought Rob did good.
Okay. All right, so if we're, if we're comfortable, we'll make those changes, we'll get signatures and get that, get that forwarded out.
Okay.
So we're comfortable with that, so I'll have Anna make those changes, then we'll also put this on our website as well.
Okay.
Okay? Very good.
We move it?
So, yeah, with, with that, would entertain a motion of approval for forwarding the letter of support out.
I'll move that we forward the climate change as amended.
Okay, and second?
I'll second.
All right, so we'll make those additional updates and changes and we'll get the signatures and we'll get the letter forwarded out. All right. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Move on to the YMCA roadway dedication. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Supervisor, this was something, it was probably at least a month or so ago. Came in and it was kind of a subset of the board, so Supervisor LeFontin thought it was important to bring it back, have some further discussion with the board on it. At that point, it was an informational item. We're obviously still talking, this is the YMCA Route 250. This is, was Grossman's, this was the Wickhams' property, just to kind of orient everybody. This discussion with Home Leasing and their piece is still ongoing with the planning board. They came in for a sketch plan earlier this year. That's moving ahead. There are obviously negotiations with the YMCA because you can see the YMCA's property is right here. They're looking to acquire a small piece of it here as well as what that road piece is down the middle. So there's still negotiations, but obviously their negotiations depend is on whether the town would take dedication of that road or not. We've still got logistics to work out, we've still got to work out, you know, core samples, we've got to work out, you know, the right-of-way, all that part of it. They just want to know is whether the board, if all the other pieces come together, you know, would the board be willing to accept dedication in the future? We've looked at this with the traffic light here. This was considered with the YMCA for the possibility of dedication in the past, as well as looking at basically a spine going north and off of that, there'd be private roads. These would be private connections for Home Leasing. Obviously, this is all private property from the YMCA there. It is a little bit different than our normally dedicated roads, but we know it's going to be different because with complete streets and as part of our mixed-use piece, it does talk about on-street parking, it does talk about bike lanes, it is talking about sidewalks, so it's going to be different no matter what than any given street we have currently now. That's all part of mixed use is to have bikeability on the roads, you're going to have bike lanes next to traffic lanes in here, you're going to have on-street parking, you're going to have green space sidewalks. So I know it looks different than kind of our normal street, street with minimal curb cuts and anything else.
But, you know, the last time when you came in, Rob mentioned about the, all those parking roads...
Yeah, that's, that's still one of the things that...
I know, you know, Rob had questions about the curb cuts here and I think one of the major parts was maintenance of it or how do you maintain it in the snowplow in the winter.
Well, how do you cut them off because there's so many of them?
And we can minimize some of them, you know, we're talking about closing some off at the entrance to get the queuing back. If you're pulling out of here, the queuing's off. I don't think we're going to be able to close off all of them because obviously then you're moving traffic around, turn them to down.
Well, why, why not?
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of the dedication if they aren't willing to close half of those open. This is not supposed to be a parking lot going into a town or a...
Exactly.
That, I'm non-favor of that. So if they, if they eliminate down to three or four that maybe match up with what the north property looks like, I may be able to get on board for that. But I just cannot, I really can't wrap my head around the concept of having 10 different parking lanes opening up into, I mean, for no other reason than it's dangerous. And for second, you have Town Plaza, I'm moving through there, throwing snow into every single parking lane.
You know...
So now you're going to have traffic concerns, plowing concerns on their own parking lot, you know, these are all residents and they're going to have issues with, you know...
Is there any way you could circle them down so they could, everybody could access somehow here? You know, right now, I go every day and you know how precarious it is trying to get out like here, here, when these people are zooming down that way? And I can't imagine with a lot more activity going on the other side of the road, how dangerous it's going to be trying to, to watch where you're pulling out for both sides of the road.
Yeah. And that's, that's my feedback, so...
That's my concern, too.
Something we can talk to them about. I know part of it's the snowplow and the maintenance of pushing snow off into here. As we talked about last time, there will be, you know, if this, if they had this, would be in need for a property maintenance agreement between both properties. They would be required for plowing as well, so it doesn't only fall to the Town Plow that's going to go by once or twice a day. They may want to, you know, plow this, we have a similar thing with Baytown Plaza. Brant Point Drive, they maintain the striping on it because it's different than our normal street. They maintain the lighting, they also maintain the plowing. We run a Town Plow by it on our normal once, twice schedule a day, but being kind of their entrance to the shopping plaza, they, you know, they can plow it every hour if they want or, you know, whatever, so a higher level of maintenance with that. Well, parties understand that, you know, there'd be some sort of agreement negotiated, obviously, Town Council and stuff with that. I can go back and ask them, I know they said originally they tried to get it down to like two and I think they said they lost about 80 parking spaces. So you're losing, because now you've got to have an internal lane here, not only closing these off, now you've got an internal lane here that gets you over to this and an internal lane here, so you basically lose all of this parking as well as the end here and obviously those are prime spots, kind of right by the front door. Now with their development back here, that's kind of helped to spread it out a little bit. But obviously, you know, this is kind of their prime space here, you know, we shared with them that obviously closing off somebody's at the front to get that queuing back, so you're not having somebody pulling in as there's cars waiting to get out at the traffic light.
There's a lot of accidents still.
As well as helping out with the grade here, you know, pulling up out of that's a little bit steep, so they were going to taper that out.
I saw a lot of stop signs along those, the sides of those entranceways.
There's lots of details that still work out. We just want to know, obviously, get your feedback, you know, there was...
Well, I...
...last time and just make sure, you know, what's your thoughts, sort of go back.
My feedback is they need to come with a plan that is going to represent maybe four or five access points that align up with what is being proposed, if that. I mean, I can only speak for myself and I am not going to be in favor of a dedicated road there if they're not closing down the majority of those, the parking lines.
I'm trying to think, are there other dedicated roads that we have that have so many, oh, oh, points of access?
Your pitch into it? Probably Brant Point's the other one that accesses into, I mean, it's got multiple access off of that into, into Baytown. Not as many as this is here.
Yeah, I was going to say, the easy answer is, is not as, as many as it is here. As we, just to recap what Mark said, as, as we spoke with the group, both from the Y and with Home Leasing, one of the things that we were sensitive to was those first spaces, what I would call the, the most, you know, easterly spaces there, so that from a queuing standpoint, you minimized, you know, any, any pinch point there. The other, the other thing is, is that if you start closing off, you significantly lose a number of parking spots, which they can't afford to lose. I mean, they, they just can't afford to lose those, those parking spots. And, you know, it's, it's a tight, it's a tight site now and if we lose some number of spaces, 30, 40, 50 spaces, then that, that will have an overall impact on that, on that facility.
Mark, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to the dedication of the road. I do appreciate what Rob is saying about the access points on there. My concern, and probably Rob feels this way too, is that would it be safe for me to say or to assume that should plans keep moving forward, that there would have to be some type of engineer-based traffic study stamped by an engineer for that? Because I would be concerned about an accident and then liability now on a dedicated road and having, you know, the, the legal research done and saying, well, you guys created this situation that is dangerous and now we're liable for, you know, some potential accident, you know, catastrophe, whatever you want to call it, that would, might occur. And I certainly understand that those events can happen on any, you know, public road, any dedicated road, but this is a little bit different with the amount of ingress and egress that could occur, all within a short distance of each other. I mean, I, you know, I throw out that comment that I'm not opposed to it, I do appreciate Rob's concern and my concern is from a legal perspective of liability if, if there's not some formal stamped engineering study done on whether we're creating, or whether, you know, this setup that I'm looking at right there or layout is creating precarious situations. I don't know that.
And I did speak with Peter Vars today, they are retaining a traffic engineer to take a look at that. I'll ask him to take a look at, as part of this, obviously, you know, take your feedback, push it through them on that, but it sounds like the board is open to taking dedication given sureties, modifications, obviously, we still need...
A traffic study that shows that it's not going to...
Yeah, and we'll have them analyze that and take a look at that and what the best configuration may be, what the impacts are.
Yeah.
Bring it back at a future event, but I think they're just looking at, they're at the point of, you know, is it go or no-go? And I think the dedication of that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of conditions that need met, as we talked about, is, you know, the width of the road and it's going to meet all the normal standards the board looks at as, as part of a dedication, does it first off meet our, our construction standards and then obviously second, you know, access points and...
Even the ingresses off 250. You know, do you know, today, I go to the Y every day, today I had to sit there through two lights to make a left into the parking lot. You know how much traffic is going down 250 and people trying to get into the Y? And you think about how it's going to be when there's all that extra?
And they are studying...
You know what I'm thinking about that, too?
As part of this, they're going to look at, they look at the traffic light down at Wayland and 250 and they look at this traffic light as well as Atlantic. The other development that's going to the north is looking at Penfield Center Road as well as Jackson and, you know, once you look at those intersections, they can work[1794.82] can work with the State DOT to work on timing or gapping, you know, once, now that those are there and functioning, it's good to have another look at it, and maybe there needs some adjustment to timing of how long the turn lane in it, or the turn arrows are, what's the timing of the light. Obviously, this is a four-way intersection, there'll be further discussion when and if it goes east, or, you know, how that goes is, you know, how that ties into it as well. So this is, obviously, evolving, there's a lot of information, I don't have all the answers, but at least just kind of go back to the Board and say, yes, there's a possibility of it, but we need some additional...
I, I would say, yes, there's a possibility, in my mind, there is a possibility, but I really want to see that traffic study, with all what's going to happen on either side, if it gets approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would think that, I guess what I'm hearing from you is that, should this move forward, that that road would have to meet our standards in order for us to accept it, for dedication, because, because I know this Board has turned down other private roads because they were not willing to go up to town standards, and so we did not accept that.
And I, we believe that it is built to town standards today, because then the thought was, when this went in, knowing there was a traffic light there, that this may be dedicated someday, there was conversation about it, we have an access easement over it, because we considered it, you know, we have basically a generic access going to the north in the back, so we believe it was built to standards, we'll verify, we'll have new core samples as we have other streets, make sure the stone is there, make sure the pavement thickness is there, you know, make sure the drainage works and everything else, so we'll still verify, but the intent was, or at least in their mind, was to have this dedicated at some point in the future, so at least that consideration was done, where a lot of private drives are not intended to be dedicated ever, and then are, are built to a lesser standard, you know, kind of right from the get-go.
Right, okay.
I would entertain a motion to table this matter?
I'll take that, it's our second.
Okay. Andy, and then Rob. Okay, any further discussion on this, either from Board or staff on this matter? All right, Mark, you have what you need to go back, so we'll show this matter as a tabled, tabled matter. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter is tabled. We'll move on to sidewalk waiver request for Capstone subdivision, sixteen ninety-eight Creek Street, and Mr. Valentine.
This kind of shows a flat map version, here's Creek Street, Harrogate, Bunker Hill is kind of to our south, this is the latest development, if everybody's been going by, obviously, there's tree clearing, which the Board is well aware.
Yes.
They've come to, obviously, the Planning Board, they've gotten their approvals for the development, one of the final items is discussion of the sidewalk waiver. All sidewalks currently are on the west side of Creek Street, I don't believe there's any sidewalks on the east side of Creek Street, other than that Fast Track, and probably the other end up until you get up, you know, well, a plank road.
That was after the sewers went in, right, the sidewalks went, sidewalks went in...
About the same time, it was mid-two thousands.
Yeah.
So the Planning Board was supportive of a full waiver, obviously, with, you know, then paying the appropriate fees into the general sidewalk fund, and sidewalks other places. You know, PRC's initial thought was, you have to have a sidewalk here, you know, with a short cul-de-sac in the street, there's not a lot of traffic, and obviously, once they come out, you know, they'd have to cross Creek Street anyway to get onto sidewalks on the other side, with sidewalks on this side, nothing to connect it to, you know, the Board and PRC didn't see any, at least at this point, we're taking the necessary easements, as we always do, we'll take easements through there, we've even taken the, you know, the easement in here, if and when, you know, those neighbors ever came back, wanted to do sidewalks, obviously, if that be at their cost at that launch point.
Yeah.
There was really nothing to tie it into here, some kind of, the question was, do you have a sidewalk internal, inside? But, on the Board's thoughts, obviously, then, you know, we'd have them contribute to the general sidewalk fund, and, you know, hopefully support some of the other locations we're targeting.
Yeah, I think a, a sidewalk in there is just really not necessary, with the, you know, the small amount of houses.
Yeah, four hundred, you're six hundred feet, so it's a, it's a pretty short street with a cul-de-sac on it, and sixteen new lots, so it's not a lot of homes in that.
Okay. So we consider easement not only on Creek, but on Capstone, and then, then for the sidewalk fund, money for both Creek Street and Capstone?
Definitely.
Yep. So, they were paying to the, they pay into the sidewalk fee, we put for sidewalks on other locations of the town, we'd have an easement down the road, if in fact sidewalks continue to develop north and south, we'd have that, the ability to go in and at least do that, because we'd have the easement.
Okay.
I move what you just said, perfect.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved, the second, Mark, we'll put the waiver together for that, and we'll, we'll finish or complete the cycle for that, Mark.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That brings us to item E, Wickham Farms, grade and fill, for U-Pick, Mr. Valentine yet again.
Thank you, Board. I don't know if... Sure enough, this obviously came before the Board, it was late last year, talking about the proposed relocation of the Wickham Farms over into Sweet Corners Road, the Board talked about the uses that were over there, they talked about, you know, the conservation easement, again, this property splits what is now mixed use, and what is under the conservation easement area. It came in under the Planning Board for a sketch plan, they had the sketch plan hearing, it's progressing, but obviously, you know, something major, it's going to be a longer process with that. So Mr. Wickham is here this evening to answer his questions, basically said, I still need to do some parking for my U-Pick come fall, so he's just looking at, we thought, you know, maybe appropriate for discussion with the Board, is to look at doing the gravel area in the front, and this, this is kind of a blow-up, so it's like kind of a, you will blow sketch and build, when I get off base, is, he's still got the U-Pick uses here, he's shown where he's parked vehicles in the past, so I think looking ahead and not trying to create issues on Sweet Corners Road with his parking, obviously, the Planning Board will continue its discussion about the CSA building and the other development, he's just looking, is it possible to get started on, at least creating the gravel area, keeping the cars off the road, you can have the apples, the corn, the fall, he's got some field areas that is used in the past, and I kind of pulled out his picture sketch that he passed on previously, that kind of showed the queuing, and there were vehicles he had in the fields, you know, just this, this past season.
Is the plan to keep it stone, or...
Yes. Yeah, it would remain gravel, you know, as part of the easement, again, it's not increasing previous here, you'd have to pave the piece in the right-of-way, as we always require, but then to keep it gravel here...
So, gravel to meet how many cars?
I believe it's for a hundred and seventy-five.
And the, and the real, I mean, core use of this, if I remember correctly, is just in the fall.
Yeah, they're looking to transition their use from now, they're more of a three-season to just kind of a late summer, fall operation, the U-Pick apples, the pumpkins is the biggest time, you just get a surge of people, and he's got the piece across the street, he's been parking people in the field, which is, is nice on a nice dry day.
But isn't it for now, too, I mean, for the other vegetables and stuff, that you can get that...
That'll be his CSA as well, I mean, through this season, he's still got his building on...
Oh, right, right.
On 250, but then going into next year, obviously, you know, he'll continue with the Planning Board on his new CSA building, and the other purchases, but he's still looking ahead at his fall, saying...
So this would be fall?
He's hoping for it this summer, so he can have it ready for this, this fall U-Pick season, keep people off Dublin, have a dry spot that, you know, if it's a wet fall, I'm trying to park people in the field, you're trying to park them on the side of the road.
Would anything else be parked there besides customers? Like, you know, vehicles for flowers, I don't know, the vehicles for the...
I think he has other locations that he stores his tractors and his stuff, I mean, he owns the piece to the south, you know, over here, he's got some existing buildings and barns there, and stores his equipment, so I think it's just to kind of handle that surge of people in the apple picking season, and if the Board is okay with the grade and fill, you know, staff can work with him, you know, on the grades and the stone, but he just...
Would there be signage there off of Sweet's Corner, that there's a, this is the parking lot for the U-Pick, the U-Pick sign, something?
And I just drove by, you know, this past season, he had the big hay bale rolls out at the streets, and U-Pick, with a little arrow, kind of worked with the property owner in the corner to do that, as well as signage out there, and Bill, I think he even had flaggers out on the busy Saturday weekends, kind of directing people where to park, and making sure they go off Sweet's Corners and Dublin, just, you know, we didn't create a situation out there. I didn't hear any issues, concerns this past fall, and I think that, given Saturday, they had two hundred-plus cars out, at least on your lot, as well as across the street, so I think they had...
How much fill?
It's just the gravel, so they're not changing the grade, they're just looking to, they obviously strip off the topsoil, and then, you know, bring in the gravel for it, but being that big of an area, I thought I'd bring it to the Board as a, as a grade and fill permit, they would still, you know, keep moving with the Planning Board on the building and the architecture, and, you know, the other uses and the layout of the site, and where the walkways and pathways go, but this would at least kind of get them set up for this fall's season, and then, you know, however the negotiations and discussions go.
How far down do you go for the, when you, when you get rid of the topsoil?
Usually you got to go nine to twelve inches.
Where does that, where does that go? Where does the topsoil go?
Um, check with Bill, whether he'd stockpile it and use it in other locations, you know, I'm sure it's, you know, in Ag Field, it's, it's good quality materials, he'd probably use it in other spots to blend out on the site, but, yeah, you strip off, just to make sure you get down to the subsoil, you know, and then bring in your stone, and then fill it back up with gravel.
Okay.
The, there's no chance, you know, from a Planning Board standpoint, that there's going to be any modifications to the location of the parking lot, from what we see right now?
I mean, it went through sketch plan, I think it was, I don't want to speak for the Board, but I think it was well-received by them through that, he's just working on, he's got to get sanitary sewer out there now, he's got to work on architecture of the building, how does he handle stormwater, you know, some more of the normal logistical things, I think the Board was supportive of the general layout, location of what was out there, Mr. Wickham did a nice job of talking to the neighbors, we got letters of support from the neighbors around him, saying they were supportive of, you know, what's going on, closest neighbors right here, right off the parking lot, we got a letter from them saying they were supportive of what he's doing, he's a good neighbor, and understand what's going on, and so...
Okay. More further questions? Consistent with what we saw a year ago, consistent with the Planning Board sketch plan for that site, Staff, any additional input that we haven't discussed this evening that you believe should be added to the record, or was discussed at PRC?
I have only a question, just go back to the topsoil issue, I assume you want to keep the topsoil, you're not going to sell it, and screen it?
Yes.
Okay. So Board, seeing no further discussions on that, I would entertain a motion of support for this application.
Sure, yeah, a second. Support the grade and fill permit.
For the, for the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda for the work session, and seeing no further business to come before the Board, the May ninth, two thousand and eighteen, work session stands adjourned at seven forty-three PM, the next work session will be at, on May twenty-third. Thank you very much, everyone that participated, thank you to PCTV.